So at this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners Work Session, May the 25th, 2022, to order. And I ask Rodney if he will bring the list forward from the marshal. If you've got your phones still on, which I think I probably do, it'd be a good time to silence that. Thank you, sir. So I am delighted this morning to have one of my favorite people, Pastor Johnny McBurroughs of Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church, who's here and is going to bring us our invocation and pledge the flag or preach a sermon, whatever you want to do, Johnny. Come forward, please. Stand if you're able.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. We are honored to be here this morning. Let us pray. Our great God and Father, we come again in the name of the Savior. Lord God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings we enjoy in this great nation. But Lord God, we come with a heavy burden of the things that have happened in Texas, Buffalo. But Lord God, we are not without hope. As the Psalmist say, "O my soul, why thou disquieted within me? Yet hope thine God." We hope in thy great grace, and we hope in this great nation. Lord God, we pray now that you would cover each one of us with your grace and your mercy. Give us the strength, Lord God, to keep looking to the hill from which come our help. Not all of our help come from you. We pray now, Lord God, for this board. We pray for this great nation, this state, and this great county and the cities. Father, we just ask you now, continue to guide us. We need you now more than ever. We will be so careful to give you the praise. Remember our police officers, all of those, Lord God, who donned their uniforms day in and day out to give this great nation, this great county, this great city, the protection we need. It's in the name of the Savior we pray with thanksgiving and expectations. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thanks so much, Pastor McBurroughs, for getting us started off correctly. Not only do you see one, two, three commissioners, but we have a fourth commissioner who's on the phone. Are you there, Commissioner Stover?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. We got you loud and clear. And our county attorney and county administrators. We're almost a full panel. The minutes for May the 10th, 2022, work session and for the May 10th board meeting minutes are also available for review. Under announcements, we're going to do a team Paulding recap or video of the A-DAD Alcohol and Drug Awareness Day highlights at Austin Middle School a couple of weeks ago.
Today is a fantastic day. It's our A-DAD Day, Alcohol Drug and Awareness Day. Students, a couple of things here. We hope that what you get from this is understanding the choices that you make. And we understand, too, one of the biggest things y'all dealt with was peer pressure and making those choices. And when you have, you see those far-ranging effects that some of our poor choices make. So that's what kind of we hope, one of the things we hope that you get out of it. Another one is seeing what the resources that are around you, that sometimes some of those resources get some negative attention, but they're not here. They're here to help us and that you have a lot of resources that are there. And so, guys, as you get older and that peer pressure comes, I hope you remember some of the things you learned today and that those choices you make will be more positive. So students, we really want to hope that it impresses on you today all of the, A, the resources that our county has put into this program today, where you walk away from it and you understand this concept about choices. Always make positive choices. Always think through the later down the road impact your choices may have. And if nothing more, find a trusted adult. Go have a conversation with them. Think through what you're doing. But really, great day, lots of good stuff with the Sheriff's Department out here, with our magician starting the day in the morning. You know, I know y'all enjoyed the K-9 units. Chris Sandy's got a fantastic story that he had where you kind of really get to hear what choices he made 30 years ago, how they've impacted him throughout his whole life and also impacted others. So last 10, last 12 years, I've really done nothing but support middle schools in the district. My kids went through school here at Austin, so very excited that we're able to have this
Thank you, Jeff Harkins and your team again. A-DAD is great. How many A-DADs have we had here in Paulding County?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's around 22 or 23 that we've done here in Paulding.
Yeah, a lot of people never even find out about it, but if it saves one or two lives, it's worth all the time we put into it. And also on the team are Felicia Womack and, of course, Philip Todd, all the people that do the videos. So just very grateful to you today, folks. So no invited guests. We have some special people here, but we're going to hear from them momentarily anyway. Under bid awards, item number two on the agenda is to award the purchase of replacement computers to the lowest responsible bidder, SHI International, in the amount of $73,520.80. Ms. Tabitha Pollard, our finance director.
Good morning. We'll try to be brief. We've got quite a few of these this morning. This is routine purchase. They're budgeted computers, replacement computers, that are used throughout the county. Each year, the IT department solicits bids for about 20%, 25% of the computers. This one's a little less because we have some remaining from the previous year, so we didn't purchase quite as many this time. This is a total of about 70 computers, and the low bid was SHI in the amount of $73,520.80.
Thank you, Tabitha. Bid award item number three is to award the purchase of two fire pumpers from Nefeco, which is North American Fire Equipment Company, in the amount of $401,967 each, funded through SPOST. And Ms. Pollard and Chief Pelfrey is here also if needing help, Tabitha.
I'm certain I need help. This is another fairly routine item. We purchased these. The build time is over a year, and so this will replace two of the pumpers that we have, and those two will be moved to surplus. And so we just kind of move them down the line. While we will be surpleassing one, one will be moved into a reserve capacity.
Anything bad, Chief?
Yeah, this will replace some of the engines. We've got three engines that are actually 22 years old that are still frontline apparatus. And there are two doors, and we've got to get four doors in some of these stations where we can have multiple firefighters there. So it's kind of our plan to do that. And like Tabitha said, it's going to take about, actually, a year and a half to two years probably before we get those trucks with the way things are going. I believe they had a 485 days on this, but normally it runs a little over that.
Any questions? Well, item number four is similar. Award the purchase of one pump and pump and roll engine from North American Fire Equipment Company in the amount of $421,993, also funded by SPOST.
It's the same type of apparatus, except it has the advantage of flowing a foam product. And while it's in motion, the truck's in motion, you can't do that with the existing fire pumpers. This will allow us to use it. We're going to place it at Station 12 here on the west end and be able to use it at the airport if we had an aircraft incident and also along the 278 corridor in case we have some large truck fires. And basically what it is, it has a turret or a monitor on the front bumper, and the operator is able to use it inside the truck where they don't have to get out, and they can move forwards and backwards in case they have an incident. So it costs about $20,000 more to have that.
Any questions? Number five is to award the purchase of production disk space to the lowest bidder, SHI International, in the amount of $55,651.97, also funded by SPOST.
As technology advances, the sheriff's office is requiring more and more disk space, so images take a little more space than maybe a document. So the need is increasing very, very quickly. This server will be used to house all images, data files for the SO, and so we're proposing that we use SPOST funds to fund this purchase. And we're, again, recommending award to the lowest bidder, SHI, $55,651.97.
Thank you very much. Item number six is to award the Buchanan Highway Water Main Extension Contract for Construction Services to HD Excavation and Utilities in an amount not to exceed $942,930, funded through general funds, and this project to be located in Post 2. Ms. Ashmore to report.
Good morning. The Buchanan Highway Water Main Extension is located between Ivy Road and then heads east toward the intersection of Buchanan with Golden Road. This portion of Buchanan Highway does not currently have access to potable water, and the residents of this portion of the road, along with some of our business owners in the area, submitted a petition and collected the signatures of the residents in the area to reach that required threshold of participation. And so we will be, this project would extend that 7,100 feet down Buchanan Highway. We advertised for this back in April and received four bids earlier this month. So the low bid is HD Excavation and Utilities at $942,930. And we've already had, we have HD working in the system today, and our discussions have been that as they finish the school road water main extension, they should have the materials available for this project and then move directly over there. And so we're recommending the award to HD Excavation and Utilities.
Questions?
Lori, as far as materials, how long is it taking us to get what we need in?
We're hearing five months. We've heard six months, but we've also had some instances where we've been locating materials and been able to find them more quickly because someone else has canceled an order. And so we continue to be in that. And so our warehouse folks, as well as HD, are very connected to that communication network, and we'll be getting that pipe in as soon as possible. But right now, it is highly affected by that supply chain market and particularly raw materials.
Thank you.
And item number seven is to award the Copper Mine Water Reclamation Facility MBR Treatment Capacity Expansion Contract for Construction Services to IHC Construction Companies LLC in the amount not to exceed $11,842,000. And this is to be funded by ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, part of the pandemic money that was released. So the funds will come from ARPA. Project's located in Post 3. Lori.
Okay. This is a 1 million gallon a day capacity expansion for Copper Mine, which is located off of Bill Carruth, near the film studio. They are, it's an MBR treatment plant. We have a permit from the state for this expansion as well as another level of capacity that will allow us to double it again. The important thing is the capacity as far as what that's going, and it is being done within the structures that are already on site. The very minimal structural and yard piping. What we're going to be working on in this is the membrane units, the chemical storage and feed system, the UV disinfection system, a new sludge holding tank, a dewatering centrifuge, and we'll modify the reuse pump station for the water we use in the facility and integrate into our SCADA system. And so we are requesting the award of this construction contract to IHC at $11.8 million.
You get pretty excited about this stuff, don't you?
I do.
Hey, I can't remember.
This is, particularly this project, we've been working on this a long time. We came to the board and got approval for design several years ago when the plant was at 80% of capacity, and we're pushing the limit now. So we are, it is very exciting to see this moving forward.
Can you refresh me and just whisper it on what, because I feel like I should know what MBR stands for?
Membrane Bioreactor.
Membrane Bioreactor. Stover, you'll be tested on that later.
I got it.
All right. Good job. All right, we're going to have a new face up here, a bearded face named Mr. Jones for item number eight. Approve the purchase of Godwin CD15 or 150S Dry Prime Pump for the Transportation Department to Godwin Pumps in the amount of $53,159.60. Mr. George Jones.
Morning. Morning. As you said, Chairman, this is for the purchase of a six-inch trash pump. The trash pump will be utilized by DOT maintenance crews. We utilize them to bypass water on drainage projects, building culverts, removing culverts, head walls, wing walls, that type of thing. We solicited quotes from four different vendors. We received three quotes, one no response. Based on the quotes received, we recommend the Godwin six-inch diameter trash pump to be purchased. The Godwin was not the lowest bid. It was the second low bid. The Godwin was $3,045 higher than the low bid. However, it had features such as remote monitoring and a Zuzu engine, and Tim Atchison Fleet, maintenance director, was more comfortable with the durability and working on performing maintenance on the Godwin pump. Godwin also, the parent company is Xylem, and they have an office located in Kirshville, so there's a local presence. So we recommend purchasing the Godwin pump from Xylem and hopefully be able to answer any questions you may have.
No questions. Item number nine. Award the vehicle purchase of two Chevrolet Tahos for the Paulding County Fire Department to Hardy Chevrolet in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $78,198, funded through your special purpose local option sales tax. You're going to be hearing that a lot in the next few months as it gets voted on in November. So it's that one penny on the dollar that funds things like Tabitha's going to tell us about.
Vehicles have been a little difficult to come by this year, but we had the opportunity to order some Tahos. We've had trouble getting some trucks, and so the fire department for this one has requested a replacement vehicle, and they're also going to use a Tahoe for an ALS rather than a truck to be able to get that in service sooner. So we're recommending, Hardy Chevrolet currently holds the state contract for the Tahos, and we're recommending award of two Tahos in the purchase in the amount of $78,198 based on that state contract pricing.
Move on to number 10, which is yours also, Tabitha. Amend the April vehicle award to purchase five to seven 2023 Chevrolet Tahos to Hardy Chevrolet in the amount not to exceed $285,558. SPOST funds and JCSA funds will be used for this purchase.
If you'll remember, a couple of months, a couple of weeks ago, we were requested kind of a not to exceed amount for five Tahos. We understand that there will not be an order next year for those Tahos, and so the sheriff's office has requested to increase the number from five to seven. So the amount on here is from five to seven, and we also have a more accurate cost amount. This cost is a little different than the others. As you add features, obviously with any other vehicle purchase, the price goes up. So police interceptor, the color, that kind of thing has brought these prices up to $40,794 each for a grand total of $285,558.
Questions? And item number 10, amend the April, I'm sorry, that's the one we just did. Item number 11 is to award the Extreme Networks Maintenance Renewal Contract to the lowest bidder, PC Solutions, in the amount of $93,107.72, funded through our general funds.
With the use of technology and networks to make that technology talk to each other so that we are a little more efficient comes maintenance agreements. This is a two-year maintenance agreement for the network hardware, and the lowest bidder was PC Solutions in the amount of $93,107.72. And again, that's a two-year contract.
Thank you, Tabitha, very much. Hey, that completes the bid awards under reports from committees and departments. I think I smell taxes in James. So our chief tax assessor, James Stokes, is on the way up, and he's going to brief us on the Board of Tax Assessors Assessment Notices, and I'll just turn it over to you, James. Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you. I think we have a video to show.
An assessment notice is required to be annually sent to property owners indicating what their property is worth as of January 1st. This same notice is required to be mailed to owners throughout Georgia. The Board of Assessors are required to mail the notice to the January 1st owner. Notices are mailed late May to early June. The notice lists general property information, previous and current year value, and owner's rights if they have questions or concerns within 45 days of the notice date. The assessor's office has an excellent website where anyone can search property information quick, easy, and free of charge. From searching individual property information to detailed reports on entire neighborhoods, the website has simple tools allowing users to easily find information and ensure their property value is fair and just. State law requires the notice to list a tax exemption based on current property information and the previous year's millage rate adopted by governing authorities. This is not a tax bill. The estimated tax required on the notice creates the majority of owners' concerns and confusion. The Board of Education, Board of Commissioners, and cities adopt millage rates based on funding annually required to serve citizens. If local authorities do not reduce the millage rate to offset property value change, they must advertise and hold multiple public hearings to consider citizens' concerns. After each governing authority carefully considers requests from citizens and required funding to operate local government, millage rates are adopted in early fall and property tax statements are sent a few weeks later. What if the assessor's office does not update values? The purpose of updating property values is not to increase taxes, but to ensure values are within legal standards and values are fair and uniform between similar properties. Georgia law requires all counties maintain values within 5% of what properties are selling for as of January 1st. Annually updating property values ensure property owners' values will reflect what the real estate market is for their specific area. To ensure compliance, the Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts annually audits the assessor's office, and every three years, the Department of Revenue conducts an in-depth review of all aspects of the office. When the assessor's office does not comply with Georgia law, citizens can face financial penalties, and counties will not be allowed to collect revenue needed to support citizens' expectations. We hope this helps you understand a little more about the annual notice of assessment. If you have any questions concerning the notice of assessment, dedicated appraisal staff are available at 770-505-1362 within 45 days of the notice date. If you have any questions concerning value exemptions or the assessment process, please feel free to contact the assessor's office at 770-443-7606. Email at assessors@paulding.gov, or stop by our office on the third floor of the Watson Government Complex, and one of our friendly staff will be glad to assist you.
Thank you for letting us do these videos. This is the third video that we've had. This one will go out to the public today. We have another video that we hope to have out probably next week or the week following, really explaining property tax bills and where property owners, their funds go, what these funds do in the county, whether it be fire or the sheriff's office or whatever. We are required to send this assessment notice. We typically send the assessment notice right around the end of May, early June. It does have a 45-day appeal period, and it should not be a surprise to anybody this year. Things are going up. The market has definitely blasted off over the last 12 months, and we've had staff working constantly over the last year, making sure our values do reflect what's going on in that market. We're not trying to hit on a high side of anything, but we can't hit on the low side because if we do, and then the Department of Audits do come in and find that our office is not in compliance with all the government red tape, then yes, the county will get hit with fines and penalties, and eventually you'll have to get them in line one way or another. So I'll be glad to take any questions that you have.
Well, I think it's very important to emphasize, as you already have, it's not a tax bill.
Correct. Correct. And like, we tried to squeeze the questions that we constantly receive during our appeal period into that, and with the millage rate and the estimated tax, that's been on there since, I think, about 2012. That's a requirement. That's a state form that every county has to use, and it is very confusing to property owners because that number on that assessment notice will not match what people see in the fall. It never does. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good video. Okay, it's exciting today to have several of our members from our water team. And Lori, you want, we haven't coordinated anything. I've got a list of about nine names here, and I saw some of the people out in the lobby that have come in. But we've got four awards from the Georgia Association of Water Professionals, two gold award and two platinum awards.
We do, and I'd like to ask our wastewater treatment and lab staff to come up and join me up here because without their dedication and hard work, these types of awards are not possible.
May I just hand these to anybody or the whole team?
Well, the Copper Mine Award is to John Pavel. The Platinum Award for Copper Mine is also John. The Pumpkin Vine Platinum Award is for Pumpkin The Pumpkinvine Platinum Award is, um, for Pumpkinvine and goes to Mark Filer. And Upper Sweetwater is to Greg Paro, our, our superintendent there. Dave, you said I get excited about, um, about the, um, about the plant expansion. I can't tell you which one I'm more excited about right now because this is the type of thing that, um, really demonstrates the, the work that, that these gentlemen do. Um, the G A, Georgia Association of Water Professionals, um, is a, is the state organization for water professionals and it's people who implement state and federal water supply, water resources, water quality. We do education, um, and assist in management and protection of Georgia's water resources. Um, annually, GAWP recognizes water and wastewater facilities that achieve full compliance with their permits for an entire year. They, in twenty-twenty-one, all of our permitted wastewater facilities, uh, were in full compliance. Uh, the Gold Award is for annual compliance. So, um, we, we do have the, um, the Upper Sweetwater, uh, plant received a Gold, Gold Award after suffering a setback last year. They have, again, are on, on track, uh, in the, in these awards. Coppermine, um, has received both a Gold and a Platinum Award and the Platinum Award is after five years of consecutive full compliance. Uh, and Pumpkinvine, that Mark Filer is representing today, is, um, is being recognized for, with a Platinum Award and it's their first year of having achieved that Platinum status. So, five years of, of consecutive full compliance. This represents sixteen thousand samples that are analyzed in, in a, um, in a year to determine compliance and a single permit violation disqualifies the facility. So, achieving this is no easy feat. Um, it's a team effort. It requires cooperation and communication between our operators and our lab staff and our, our engineers, our maintenance staff and management and not to mention the, um, absolutely essential role that our elected officials play in providing the necessary resources to enable the staff to do this job. And we want to thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Board.
Lori, come on up and get in the center, please, and, uh, we'll kind of balance around you and get a picture here. Congratulations, everybody. That can, that concludes the reports from committees and departments. Uh, under, uh, public participation on agenda items, we have, uh, three citizens who would like to speak on the, actually, the old business item, which, uh, we haven't gotten to yet. But I'm just gonna call you out in order and, uh, you'll come up to the podium and, uh, address the panel here. So, we have Searle, um, I believe you pronounced W A T N E S, Watness?
That's correct.
Okay, you're up, sir.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of, uh, we were supposed to be here yesterday, but we understood it got canceled, but, um, on behalf of Paul Harris Road and the gas station and the rezoning of that corner, um, I have several items here and it's a wonderful thing they got a reward here. I'm gonna tell you that our water's gonna be sabotaged out there with this gas station and all this going on. I found, I found a lot of statistics here. One single gallon of gasoline that could spill on the ground from a gas station will contaminate seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of drinking water. Everybody on Paul Harris Road, or almost everybody, has at least one well. I have four wells on my properties. Gasoline can seep into the ground even from these tanks and these storage tanks. Um, we, we have, I have four pages here. I don't have enough time probably to go through all of them. I have and spent time finding twenty-six and I found two more. There's twenty-eight gas stations within seven-point-one miles of downtown Dallas. Twenty-eight gas stations with almost all of them convenience stores. Benzene is a chemical that's put in gasoline. I'm sure everybody may know that. I am learning more about this as it goes along. Is a carcinogen. It causes bad sicknesses in children. Um, I have Pumpkinvine Creek that runs out there, which is a very, they, they stock trout in it, which will be contaminated, which is less than nineteen-hundred feet from this, um, gas station. In nineteen-seventy-four, the SDWA was established to protect the quality of drinking water in the United States. This law focuses on waters actually the potential designed to drinking use, whether from above ground or underground. In September of twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, Congress amended a law in nineteen-eighty-six, nineteen-ninety-six to protect drinking water from these things, including rivers, lakes, from gas stations, pumping stations of gas, oil, and, um, they spoke of gasoline that is used for airliners. I don't know what kind of gas station this is gonna be, but I found this out. The BP gas stations are one of the worst with the worst safety records among any industry in this company. In tw- in two thousand and five, fifteen workers were killed, hundred-eighty injured in a massive explosion. In that year, seven-hundred-and-sixty violations were, were levied on them with the fines of eighty-seven million dollars because of safety violations. So, I guess all of this has to do with, and I can give you all of these notes, it has to do with our health out there on this road. I know it was tabled by Ms. San, um, Sandy for the purpose of finding out how they're gonna get in and out of this gas station, but I don't think going in and out of this gas station is the issue. The gas station is the issue of our health out there and the surrounding area. A, a, a little bit of gas, a little bit of oil from any gas station, and I got you, I got you twenty-eight gas stations within seven miles. Everybody's drinking water is going to be affected. Gasoline's five dollars a gallon now and it's going to get higher and higher. What in the world? Do we need more traffic? Why do we need more gas stations? Why do we need the health of these people? She just said somebody got awarded something for taking care of, uh, uh, water. We don't even have a water line out there on our road and there's a lot of folks in Pauling County do not have, uh, 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 public water. We, we're all on well water and most of the folks and are a lot of folks in Pauling County have well water and, and so this, this, this becomes an issue. Also, the problem is that folks in these gas stations, and we're just hearing about a killing in Texas, a killing in these things from schools, from all this going on. Gas stations, convenience stores are a problem where folks are being molested, being killed. Li- listen, is my, is my health worth five minutes? You want, you, I mean, but you stopped me, but is our health in this county?
Sir, just so you know, this isn't a comment on your health. You're limited to five minutes. Um, the Board has the discretion to continue that, but the standard rule is five minutes. Thank you.
So, you sabotage my water where I'm drinking at because of five minutes on whatever you've established? I'm, I'm not so sure that that's even correct. We pay you guys a salary to listen to us in this county of what we have and the issue that we have. I'm, I'm just saying something ain't right with that if I can't speak what I have to, to, to say.
Let me just say, thanks for your comments, uh, Searle, Mr. Watness, and I think, uh, Kelly Watness also wants to speak.
I'm gonna give my five minutes to Mr. Fred Jones.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, speakers cannot cede their time to other speakers. Each speaker has five minutes.
I'll just tell them you live on the road and you don't want it.
That's right. I live on Paul Harris.
Okay, well, thank y'all for, uh, being here and expressing your, uh, your thoughts on, on this, uh, project. Uh, we also missed, have Mr. Fred Jones, uh, on this same issue.
I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to speak in opposition of this planned, uh, rezoning and the building of a convenience store. Uh, being that the owner of the property is actually in the insurance business, maybe I can hit him with this, all right? Parker Bunbury, who's the Vice President Environmental for Woodruff Sawyer, which is one of the largest insurance companies covering underground storage tanks, in an article written in Aug- by him on August eighth of twenty-nineteen stated, "So, what's the problem with storage tanks? Well, there's quite a few. They leak, which poses a significant threat to public health and natural resources. Leaking tanks can lead to very expensive cleanups, bodily injury, property damage claims, and business interruption expenses, third and first party. Estimates suggest that there are tens of thousands of USTs currently leaking in the United States alone. USTs become very difficult to insure after twenty years of use, making financial responsibility compliance difficult for tank owners. As a tank owner, first and foremost, you need to understand that all storage tanks leak. It's only a matter of time. The insurance industry views storage tanks as a ticking time bomb." Okay? Also, another item from John Hawkins University. Nicole Hughes and Stephanie Desmond wrote in a study that suggests drops of fuel spilled at gas stations, which occur frequently with fill-ups, could cumulatively be causing long-term environmental damage to soil and groundwater in residential areas in close proximity to the stations. I live at three-nine-zero Paul Harris Road. I am less than two thousand feet from the proposed site of this convenience store. I have a well in my backyard. That, that site is at risk of contamination. Conservatives re- conservatively, research estimate, researchers estimate roughly fifteen-hundred liters of gasoline are spilled at a typical gas station each decade. That's not from the storage tanks. That's from customers spilling gas onto the ground when they're pumping gas. Okay? The EPA has set five parts per billion, parts per billion as a maximum part, maximum permissible level of benzene in drinking water. EPA has set a goal of zero parts per billion, obviously, for benzene in drinking water and in waters such as rivers, lakes, because benzene can cause leukemia. Okay? Just for reference, that means one milligram per gallon is one thousand parts per billion. EPA sets it at five. Okay? Also, not to mention the diminishing of property values. All right? According to Zillow dot com, homes closest to a convenience store is the second most diminished valued properties in the industry. Only one rates higher, hospitals. According to Zillow dot com, people would rather live next to a cemetery than a convenience store. Okay? Also, the gas station convenience store potential impacts, all right? Convenience store holdups account for almost six percent of all robberies in the nation. One study noted that convenience store employees suffer from higher rates of workplace homicide, second only to taxi cab drivers. Okay? FBI reports that C-stores are the fourth most common location for violent crimes. This doesn't only mean the crimes that occur inside the convenience store as part of a robbery, it also means the crimes that occur outside from customers inflicting violence upon each other. All right? Also, we can go into studies about how alcohol affects neighborhood violence. Just the accessibility alone increases violence in the local area around a convenience store. I don't have a lot of time for this, so I'll go ahead. Traffic also, traffic injections in a, a report from the Federal Department of Transportation, traffic congestion and reliability trends and advanced strategies for congestion mitigation. Recommendations of the creation of turn lanes and merge lanes to mitigate congestion along high-speed roadways. Buchanan's fifty-five miles an hour. Skoggins is forty-five. Paul Harris is thirty-five. So, the combination of those three roads right there is justification for turn lanes. Okay? Also, City of Roswell versus Fellowship Christian School, this was a decision decided in two thousand and seven. The court found that traffic congestion is a valid consideration in the regulation of land use and since the evidence showed that the church's proposed stadium would exacerbate an already existing traffic problem, it was reasonable for the city to deny the application for permit to construct the stadium.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Jones, and expressing your ideas. The consent agenda consists of item number twelve, which is to, uh, adopt the job classification for a state court public defender. Item number thirteen is the acceptance of the attached list of streets, uh, for perpetual maintenance by Pauling County and, uh, the list is on the back table if, uh, you'd like to see the streets that are included. Item number fourteen is to authorize the county manager, and county manager's on my left, I think I called him county administrator earlier. But, uh, so, recent change, county manager to enter into a contract with Doug Eves to provide consulting services regarding Pauling County revenues. Item number fifteen is to authorize the county manager to, uh, engage David Hankerson to provide consulting services regarding Pauling County services. Item sixteen is to, uh, reappoint the EMS chief, uh, division chief, Tim King, to serve on the Northwest Georgia Regional One Emergency Medical Advisory Council for the term of June twenty-twenty-two, next month through June twenty-twenty-five. Would any of the commissioners, uh, like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing none, we'll, uh, uh, vote on them this afternoon, this evening. Under old business, uh, item number seventeen is twenty-twenty-two-dash-zero-eight-dash-z by Jonathan Jones, uh, of Elite Engineering, requesting to rezon five-point-zero-three acres from R-two suburban residential to B-one general business, uh, in order to construct a four-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot gas station and convenience store. The property is located in Land Lot seven-eighty-nine, District Two, Section Three. The proposed site is located on the south side of Skoggins Road and east sides of Buchanan Highway and Paul Harris Road in Post Two. As was mentioned earlier, this was tabled from the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting. Concludes old business. Under new business, item number eighteen is discuss action to confirm the chairman's nomination of Randall D. Harris to the position of state court public defender for Pauling, for the Pauling County State Court. And, uh, county manager, uh, Mr. Frank Baker is going to enlighten us a little bit more on, on this new business item.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as everybody knows, uh, the state court is coming to town, um, July first. Uh, we're gonna have a state court here in Paulding and we're really excited about that. As part of that, um, we need to have a public defender that's gonna handle indigent cases. So, I'm delighted, uh, today to, um, make a recommendation to you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for a nomination to be considered, uh, this evening of Mr. Randall D. Harris. And I just wanna take a moment and tell y'all a little bit about Mr. Harris. Uh, he's actually in the audience this morning. I appreciate him being here. Um, Mr. Harris is a longtime practicing attorney. He, um, he's- He's spent the last twenty years in Cobb County, eighteen of which he has been in charge of the Public Defenders Administration over there. He's also been a magistrate judge in Cobb County, and he's also been a juvenile court judge in Cobb County. So we are very fortunate to have him willing to come over here and help us with this new endeavor, and with that, Mr. Chairman, that would be my recommendation for your consideration of a nomination.
Any questions for the county manager? We are very glad to have him in the audience today, along with, so let's see, that's the conclusion of regular business, and on non-agenda items, no one has signed up. I'd ask for comments and announcements from the commissioners. Everybody good?
Not me. June 5th, we're having National Cancer Survivor Day here at Veterans Park. It's going to be huge. You're going to want to come. I'm hoping our commissioners will join me in a dunk tank.
Dave's that one.
So come out and have fun. We'll have food, entertainment. I think Caleb Hutchison is going to do a video, so we've got a lot of locals involved, so come out. June 5th starts at 1:30.
For my comment, I would just echo what our Governor Kemp put out in an executive order regarding lowering the flags to have staff on Monday and Memorial Day, and there are about four whereas comments on here, but I'm just going to pick the third one and read it from Governor Kemp. "For families across the United States, there are difficult emotions associated with days like today, being Monday. They represent great sadness and hope, grief, and celebration, conflict, and peace. Although we cannot erase your pain, please know that we all stand by you. We will honor your loved ones' sacrifice. We will permanently etch their names into our hearts and minds, and we will lift you up in our thoughts and prayers in this Memorial Day as we meet with friends and families. Let us pause and remember the following." We do have a requirement for executive session for personnel, and I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session. I will make the comment that we will adjourn from that session and not come back here to the boardroom following that meeting. Go ahead, motion.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dunn. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries four zero. We are adjourned, and thank you all for being here.